I just want to say a few comments. It's a great honor to be here today as your new mayor. I want to thank the City Council and the Seal Beach residents for entrusting me with responsibility. I also want to point out that in going on seven years here, I've not seen a better staff. From department heads to employees working hard to make things happen, thank you for all of your hard work and keeping a positive attitude and doing what's best for our great city. As your mayor, my priority will be to listen to your concerns and work to address them. I believe that by working together, we are a stronger, more vibrant community that we can all be proud of. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of Joe Kalmick. His tireless efforts are greatly appreciated, and I promise to build upon his success. Together, let us work towards a brighter tomorrow where Seal Beach continues to flourish. Thanks. And now, I'll call the meeting to order. On behalf of the entire City Council, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Landau and Steele to the City Council. And we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Councilmember Steele to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take a roll?
Yes. Councilmember Kalmick.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Councilmember Landau.
Here.
Mayor Protem Su Starsik.
Here.
And Mayor Moore.
Here.
All present.
We'll move to the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolution ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I'd like to pull item J, please, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. We have five supplemental communications that were received and has been distributed to the council and made available to the public on the city's website. I'd also like to note that for Council item A, Donald Hornick's resume has been added to the file, so you should have that in your folder today. And also, Consent Calendar item D, Westcom, there was a change between the representative and the alternate.
Thank you. And besides item J, can I call for a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
All second.
City Clerk.
Mayor Protem Su Starsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Was that Steele? Did you say Steele?
Yes. Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes yes.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations and recognitions, and we're going to have mid-year budget. And I'll call upon Finance Director Aronado.
Mayor Protem. Congratulations, Mayor Moore. Councilmembers, Madam City Manager, I present to you this evening the General Fund Midyear Budget Update. First, I would like to touch on our economic outlook. The unemployment rate in Orange County is far below that of surrounding areas at 2.5% compared to California at 4.2% and the nation at 3.6%. This impacts the ability for the city to compete in hiring. Additionally, that graph on the right, the population historically remains flat, which also impacts our opportunities because some revenues and grant fundings are based on growth in population. Also, the Federal Open Market Committee has increased the rate eight times, and we anticipate that to continue. Those interest rate hikes impacts discretionary spending. With higher prices, you have less to spend on other items impacting our purchasing power. The city has seen healthy consumer spending through December, but we do not anticipate it to stay strong through the remainder of this fiscal year. The mid-year update includes revenues received through December, and the city is coming in slightly stronger than the previous fiscal year at December. I will go over these in further detail through the upcoming slides. With fluctuations, we anticipate overall revenue to come in at budget. This is the chart of the breakdown of the previous slide, and it's important to note that property tax, sales tax, and utility users' tax makes up 73% of the general fund. And when you include charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and franchise fees, that makes up 88% of the revenues. We run lean. Property tax is the largest revenue source, making up 33.8% of the general fund. Property tax revenues has increased compared to the same period in the prior fiscal year due to the timing of payments, but it is anticipated to grow throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. The growth is primarily due to overall sales and market value increases that help to add to the city's assessed evaluation. The assessed valuation is $6.8 billion and makes up approximately 6,500 parcels, which is an increase of 7.1% from the prior year, above the countywide growth of 6.3%. The median detached single-family home in Seal Beach is approximately $1.4 million, and revenues in this area have come in strong. In the left corner is the graph that shows over the past six years, the city has had average growth of about 5% per year. And the bottom chart shows monthly budget last year per month and budget to date. Property tax payments are largely received in the months of December and April, and due to the timing of billing of property tax by the Orange County Assessor gives us an opportunity to build in good assumptions. We are confident we will remain on budget for the remainder of this fiscal year. Sales tax, which includes transaction tax and a 0.5% public safety tax, is the second largest revenue source for the city. The chart on the left shows the full impact of sales tax, and Measure BB has been fully integrated into the city over the past five years. Sales tax is coming in slightly lower than projections, although stronger than last fiscal year through December. According to HDL, the city's tax consultant, who we work very closely with, and the chart at the bottom right shows sales tax through September were strong, especially in consumer goods and casual dining. And also, fuel sales posted gains. Fuel remained high compared to the prior year. We will be meeting with our consultants next month and have already discussed that there will be reductions in their assumptions. We are watching this revenue closely, and I can suggest that those watching shop Seal Beach, meaning because those dollars stay in the city when you shop in the city. And if you shop online, try and pick up in local stores, as that revenue would come to the city and not into the overall county pool. Utility users' tax is 10.3% of the budget, and UUT is charged to customers for electric, natural gas, phones, and prepaid wireless. The city lowered the utility tax in 2014 by 1%. The city still is receiving modest growth in UUT revenues, and UUT remains relatively stable. We saw positive growth in 2022 due to the reopening of businesses across the city. For the first half of the year, we have seen positive gains outpacing assumptions. For this year, we will anticipate we will hit projections and exceed them if we remain at the same pace. Charges for services is 7.4% of the budget, and charges for services are used to recover costs of programs for specific end-users. Programs provided through community services are typically subsidized by the general fund to encourage participation. Revenue is anticipated to remain on budget and is showing timing fluctuations. A substantial portion of charges for services is refuse services, which remains on budget. The top chart shows the bump-up in 2022, which is mostly from pent-up demand as projects were completed with inspection services, leisure programs came back on schedule after COVID, and the new parking program. We just finished last year a citywide fee study. Part of the fee study will be reviewed in the upcoming budget cycle with a full cost study every four years. In the bottom chart in December, we were less than prior years, and that was due to the excessive rains we've had this year. Fines and forfeitures consist primarily of parking revenue and is 4.8% of the budget. Parking revenue increased in 2021 due to enforcement of the parking program. In the bottom chart, fluctuations in September through November are due to the training for the CSO staff and winter storms. Staff is monitoring closely, and at mid-year, this revenue is under budget. If negative fluctuations continue, staff is prepared to return to council for adjustments if necessary. Transient occupancy tax, TOT, or what we call hotel tax, accounts for 3.1%. Due to impacts of COVID-19 that began in the second half of 2020, the hotel industry reported its occupancy rates, the lowest occupancy rates since 2007. Year-to-date through December, TOT revenue is up 13% compared to last year, and TOT, which is hotel tax, is now expected to recover to pre-pandemic levels and is anticipated to exceed budget projections. Moving over to the expenditure side, general fund expenditures are relatively on target to meet expectations and are at the same level as last fiscal year. A few departments appear high when looked at from this view due to the timing of payments, such as the payment of retirement costs, insurance and general liability, and payments that are due at the beginning of the fiscal year. For example, City Manager, without the risk management payment insurance payments, would be 46% instead of the 69% posted. As shown for revenues, this is another view of expenditures. The city expenditures are 47% salaries and benefits, including retirement. This is very lean for a full-service city. With a balanced budget, which we did have this year, any potential shortfalls in revenues must be offset by spending reductions in these categories. Maintenance and operations is comprised of 62% nondiscretionary expenditures. What that means is they are mandated costs, such as fire services, dispatch, legal, and insurance costs. The city has completed half of maintenance and operations for the fiscal year. In the top-left graph, the jump in July is the payment of our general liability payment and workers' comp insurance paid at the beginning of the year. The four other jumps are quarterly fire service payments, and staff anticipates the remaining, M&amp;O, will continue to remain on track through the rest of this fiscal year. To discuss salaries and benefits, regular salaries in the first half of the year were under budget primarily due to the city's vacant positions. Expenditures were slightly lower than compared to the same time period in the previous fiscal year because of several vacancies or in the hiring process. However, there have been delays in both full-time and part-time hiring due to ongoing labor market constraints. Staff anticipates this will remain under budget through the end of the fiscal year. Other pay and benefits includes part-time salaries, medical benefits, insurance, the city's health and wellness program, tuition reimbursement, employee benefits, and overtime. Overtime is well-monitored at the city but fluctuates based on unanticipated events and situations. During the first half of the fiscal year, overtime was higher than budgeted due to usage in public safety. Public safety is monitoring overtime closely and anticipate there may be a need for a third-quarter adjustment if overall salaries and benefits come in high. The last part of salaries and benefits is retirement, which makes up about 12% of expenditures. And it's important to note, to talk about this slide right here, which is what we pay in our CALPERS retirement system, which is the California Public Employer's Retirement System. Employees in that green column, employees pick up their fair share of retirement costs. The second important point is the funded ratio, which is that yellow column. And the good news, we are healthy. CALPERS is a long-term plan based on assumptions, and those assumptions vary yearly. But we must look at the retirement plan from a long-term perspective. According to actuaries, being above 80% is a healthy place to be. Being over 100% is not. And that is because any funds over that 100% stays with CALPERS, and we will not get it back. And because we're in a pooled plan, that's a plan that's under 100 employees, you can't reduce your normal costs. So it stays with CALPERS. Also, a very important part of this slide is the unfunded portion of safety, which is that bottom line right there, that 68.2%. This is an inactive plan with CALPERS, and we kept it when we contracted with FIRE. There are no active employees in this plan contributing, and the debt is the city's. CALPERS has the city paying it off in seven payments, and we want to pay that off as quickly as possible. Once that contribution is gone, it will be eliminated. Additionally, I want to quickly discuss POBs, which are pension obligation bonds, and they are debts of the city. The city does not have currently any pension obligation bonds. They hinder the ability to get financing in other debt areas if necessary. Another city paid off their unfunded liabilities with POBs. They still have that debt POB payment, but due to the negative returns in CALPERS in 2022, that negative, it was a negative 6.1%, they now have an unfunded liability again and will need to make both payments, the unfunded liability payment and the POBs in 2024. Next steps. As of now, there are no mid-year requests for adjustments, and city staff are watching their budgets very closely. We're meeting regularly. There continue to be recessionary pressures, high inflation, increasing interest rates, and low unemployment. Supply chain issues continue with material scarcity and increasing costs. The city's doing more with less. Staff is monitoring revenues and expenditures closely, looking for alternative funding and revenue opportunities. The budget is in full swing, and we will return with updates for the 2023-24 budget as departments are preparing those budgets now. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to have any questions if
Councilmember Lisa Landau.
Thank you for that presentation, Barbara. That was great. Couple of questions. Given your update on sales and property tax and based on the most recent information, how do you see sales tax in the next three quarters?
That's a great question, because we've come in strong through December. We had good gains, but we've been meeting with our consultants regularly, and we've been in a volatile environment. Even through COVID, we were in a volatile environment. So we're watching that closely, but we are anticipating we're going to have reductions over the next couple quarters.
Also, you noted that staff is watching the revenues closely, and we are only at midpoint. Where do you estimate us to be at year-end?
Right now, we anticipate to come on budget at year-end overall with revenues and expenditures. We are watching closely overtime in a couple other areas, and if necessary, we will return to council in third quarter asking for adjustments.
Perfect. And then, I've reviewed the budget documents and appreciate your presentation for mid-year. If changes to the budget prove necessary, when will you bring those back?
If we do see negative impacts, again, we'll come back. Staff returns regularly to make budget adjustments because we do need council approval to take that action. As we monitor it, we anticipate we might come back sooner, but as we go forward, most likely the third quarter if necessary.
Okay. Just a couple more things. I have a lot of questions from my constituents regarding the contracts that the city enters into. Is it possible that we can discuss how you come about with these contracts and any questions they have, maybe during the budget discussions?
Yes, we'll be having budget discussions with council, which consists over two separate days, and we'll be bringing those, any of those questions you have, we'll be able to answer those then.
Okay, and that's why I want to take this position to ensure transparency and openness for the residents. I want to ensure that everyone knows that the city will be having budget workshops in May for the upcoming 2023-2024 budget, and I really encourage you to attend, especially if you have questions. Thank you.
Done.
Okay. Councilmember Steele?
Yeah. My only question is, we've been watching the news the last few days, and the financial system's been kind of rocked with this SVB bank failure and the, I don't know the other bank that's gone under. Can you just tell us how we're positioned on, in terms of the capital that the city holds?
Yes. We don't have any investments in SVB or the Signature Bank. We're a very diversified portfolio. We've already met with our financial advisors this morning. I've been speaking with them over the weekend to ensure. We also are, we have a lot of our investments in the LAIF, which is the local agency investment fund controlled by the state. So we're in a good position, and we're talking to them regularly.
We're not really open to risk or at risk at this stage.
No. What those two banks did is they had venture capitalist investments, and they wanted their money out quickly, but the banks were investing long-term. We have many different rates of timing flexibility, and our LAIF is cash available at an instant.
So you're comfortable?
Very.
You sleep at night?
Maybe not with a budget, because we're in negotiations with departments now, but yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Su Starsik?
Thank you. I was just going to ask about the budget meetings, May. Do we have a date on that, or is it just roughly right now, May?
We're putting those dates together, and we'll be distributing them probably this week.
Okay. The other question is just sort of related. We talked about adding short-term rentals. Have we gotten any kind of interest in that? Because I was looking at your projections for the hotel tax, so I was just curious.
We don't have that program up and running yet. We are preparing it. We do have a few short-term rentals that during this interim period are filing transient occupancy tax, but at the moment, we haven't had, it's not been a deluge of calls. I expect that we will start to see more, and not to speak for Barb, but I would expect some increase in revenues due to those. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things we talked about previously was the paying off that retirement portion of the bottom line that you showed on the slide. How much would we save if we just paid that all off? Do you have a figure on that?
Off the top of my head, I do not, but we've been working closely with CALPERS. I don't know if you can hear me. We've been working closely with CALPERS on different payment plans. You know, if the city had that revenue source, it would be substantial. Right now, we anticipate if we paid about $250,000, we'll have about $98,000 over the lifetime of the remainder of the plan in savings.
Okay. And one of the issues I have is this, the second tranche of ARPA funding is $3.1 million. Is that right? Does it make sense to try to use those funds now instead of waiting because of inflation? And can we talk about that at the strategic planning?
That is an excellent question, Mayor. We're putting scenario analysis together on different payment paydowns. What I have done in the past is we built a pension paydown plan that saved another city substantial dollars, and we utilized dollar-cost averaging where we weren't paying it all off at one time because we want to keep that leverage here at the city to have that available to be for cash. And we also have many, many other projects to look at, but we will be building in some scenarios to bring forth to you.
Okay. And were there any unexpected items that you saw in the budget this year so far?
You know, yes, I do. That's an excellent question. We're seeing tightening. We're seeing a lot of tightening now as those interest rates impact. It really impacts discretionary spending, not only for residents but for us as a city. Contracts continue to go up, and we're running lean, and there's some competitive in the unemployment market right now. Like I showed, it was 2.7%. That impacts the city.
Okay. Well, thank you. Very good presentation.
One more question. I've asked before, but I keep forgetting. When will we pay off the fire station bond? Is that...
2024-25.
2024-25. Okay, thank you.
It'll be built into the budget this year.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters cannot on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Are there any public comments? Okay, we'll close that. Move on to the city attorney report. City Attorney Garelli, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. It's a pleasure to give my first report tonight, although it will be short. Prior to the meeting this evening, the City Council met in closed session with all members of the council present to consider the two items on the posted agenda. The council took no reportable action on any of those two items. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to city manager report. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I have a couple items tonight. First and foremost, wanted an opportunity for both of our new council members, Landau and Steele, to welcome you to the council. I also want to thank you. I know we've consumed a significant amount of both of your schedules, my team and I over the past couple of weeks, but undoubtedly, we found that an invaluable use of our time and hope that the two of you did as well, and we look forward to working with both of you. Also, wanted to welcome our new city attorney, Nick Garelli. Just like with our two council members, our staff team and I have consumed a significant amount of his time over the past couple of weeks and want to welcome you to the city and to our executive team, and we're really enjoying working with you. So thank you. Also, finally, wanted to acknowledge our division chief, Craig Covey, who's not here with us tonight. He's been up with OCFA as part of a strike team that's working alongside a significant number of regional agencies up in the San Bernardino County mountain communities, and all of them collectively working tirelessly on behalf of those communities as a result of the deluge of significant snow and rainstorms over the past couple of weeks. So I wanted to acknowledge him for his efforts and that the entire first responders that are up in our local mountains helping those communities in need. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, move to council comments. Start with Councilmember Kalmick.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. We're continuing to have telephone Zoom meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the sand replenishment project in Surfside, and we think that we've, we may have turned the corner. We've applied a great deal of pressure, both from our office here in Seal Beach with Iris and her staff, as well as the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. And basically, we're trying to get signatures. The money is appropriated, and it's a question of getting signatures in time so that the project could be started this year as opposed to the last projection from the Army Corps, which was 2025. And I don't know if any of you have been down to Surfside or offshore or been able to get in the gate, but their beach has eroded to where the next substantial storm that brings high surf on shore will most likely start causing some damage to the homes. And cities of Huntington and Newport are also experiencing some severe conditions. So we're hoping that the message has gotten back to Washington, and we've had the support of our elected officials as well. So we're optimistic, but we keep on pushing. And I wanted to mention that I attended the Orange County Fire Authority Open House event this past weekend, and I have to tell you, it's something that you really ought to consider going to next year. They haven't been able to do it for the last almost three years, and this was an amazing event. I mean, they had almost 5,000 people show up during the day from 10:00 to 3:00, and they had, for kids, it would be, it's a fabulous thing to go to. You take your kids there, they can, they, you know, put them in turnouts. They had rides on actual fire engines. They had live-fire demonstrations, all kinds of, you know, stuff for the kids to take home and things to do while they were there. They had the goats that they use for clearing the brush in some of the wildland areas. So I strongly encourage you, and we'll make sure that we make, that the word gets out next year, to take in that event. And that... the word gets out next year to take in that event. And that concludes what I have for tonight.
Councilmember Steele?
I want to thank publicly, uh, city manager Jill Ingram and all of our department heads who have sat down with me and, and worked to introduce me to the work, the important work each of your departments do. I name you all by name, but you're sitting in the room and I might get a name wrong here or there and I apologize for that, so I won't do that. But thank you all, department heads. I'd like to thank my nominees who are here tonight and the ones who aren't here tonight for having a willing heart to step forward and, and be counted on the commissions and committees that you've volunteered for. Some of them will be active and some of them will not, but by the same token, I appreciate each one of you for stepping up and, and volunteering to be a part. I, in the last couple of weeks, in addition to the city meetings that we've had planned, I've attended several of the meetings at GRF, Golden Rain Foundation out in Leisure World. The GRF Board met. I introduced myself to them. And there were a couple of other meetings too, a recreation meeting and a traffic safety meeting or something like that. But nonetheless, I'm beginning to get engaged with those committees as well on behalf of the city. So there's going to be a presence at all of those meetings going forward here for some time to come. So that's all I have to say.
Mayor Protam Sustarsik?
Thank you, Mayor. I, since the last meeting, I attended a regional military affairs committee meeting, a, an OC sanitation district operations committee meeting, and I had an interview with our strategic planning consultant. And that's all for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lando?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of you know how passionate I am about the, the fentanyl crisis that our country is facing right now. And I want to thank the former council for supporting SB 44, AKA Alexandra's Law. I also know that Senator Winn has a bill coming to us soon with additional help in addressing the fentanyl crisis, and I look forward to supporting that when it comes. Alexandra was a beautiful 20-year-old from Temecula. She attended U of A and came home for winter break to deal with her stress and anxiety. She purchased what she thought was an OxyContin pill. Unfortunately, it was laced with fentanyl. Alexandra's case was the first federal case filed in Riverside County holding a drug dealer responsible for a death. The sentencing hearing took place on February 27th, which is our swearing in ceremony, otherwise I would have been there. The drug dealer received nine years in prison. We need to stay vigilant for our children, be, with our children, because one pill can kill. For more information or resources, please reach out to our Seal Beach resident who lost her son to fentanyl, McCullough Grad, or Los El Grad Eli. And that would be his mom, Perla Mendoza at Project Eli. Thank you for coming, Perla. Since our last council meeting, I've attended lots of meetings with all the department heads, getting to know them and how their departments operate. I'm really excited and looking forward to working with all of you. Also, I attended Nashville on the Coast, which kicked off at 320 Main. I, along with Mayor Moore and Councilman Kelmac, were in attendance. The other restaurants were Hennessy's, Glory Days, O'Malley's, and the incredible finale at the Beach House. The community's response was overwhelming. It was a win for our residents. It was a win for our local businesses. The restaurants were packed. And it was a win for Honor Flight Southland. Great job Cory and Darren DeLeon and the rest of the Nashville on the Coast crew. I also attended the Cypress College Americana Award. And she's not here, but congratulations to Cory and Darren DeLeon. It was an amazing evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the Americana Awards on Saturday, where Cory and Darren DeLeon were honored for the Seal Beach Citizens of the Year. And it was an honor for me to be there supporting them, along with councilmembers Joe Kelmac and Lisa Lando. I went to the Chamber of Commerce breakfast last Thursday. Thank you, Junie, for inviting me. I encourage all businesses in Seal Beach to join the chamber and help support our local businesses and events. I went to the opening of Nashville by the Sea at 320 Main. Cory and Darren DeLeon started this event last year with five bands that came out from Tennessee. Now there are 15 bands playing at five different venues and it was a lot of fun to see so many people enjoying that event. And I would like to encourage residents to attend the strategic planning meeting on April 4th. If you have ideas or concerns with the city, it's a great forum to let us know. And that's all. We'll move on to council item A. At this point, we'll direct city council appointments to the city boards, commissions, and committees as representatives for districts one, three, and five. And it's at the request of councilmembers Kelmac, Lando, and Steele that the city council appoint the following representatives to the respective districts. And I'm going to go through each one, and if you want to comment, we'll take a pause. So representative for District One, Calvin Mingion, for Planning Commission.
Yes, Calvin is here this evening. If you would please stand. Calvin brings a great deal of experience in urban planning to our planning commission. And I think along with one of our other new members should put our planning commission in a, in a good spot to deal with the several issues that we're currently and in the future going to be dealing with with regard to our housing element, ADUs, vacation rentals, and other issues that having people on the planning commission who understand the laws and understand the, the issues that we have facing us to comply with and deal with those regulations, I think will be a great benefit to our community. So thank you, Calvin.
And representatives for District Three, Susan Perel for Environmental Quality Control Board.
Susan here? Oh, there she is. Stand up, Susan. I have appointed Susan Perel as our District Three Environmental Quality Control Board Commissioner. And she is an environmental engineer, so I think she's going to be the best one for the job. So thank you, Susan.
I have clear confidence and I will try and do my best.
I know you will. Thank you.
Lorenz Kruger for Recreation and Parks Commission?
I'm sure you all know Larry Kruger. I think he's going to do an amazing job with, as Parks and Rec Commissioner. I'm not saying that right, am I? Is it Recreation and Parks?
That's fine.
I got the show stuck in my head. But Larry, I look forward to having you on, on the board or with the rest of the Recs and Park Commissioners. Thank you.
Richard Coles for Planning Commission?
In case you guys don't know, Richard Coles has been part of the Environmental Quality Control Board for over eight years. And so I'm moving Richard up to the Planning Commission. And Richard has a background in construction and engineering, so I think he will be a great asset to the Planning Commission and to the city. Also, it wasn't on there, but I've also, I'm keeping Peter Anino on as our Seal Beach TV Cable Foundation member. Thank you.
And representatives for District Five, Donald Horning for Environmental Quality Control Board.
You, you, you put an ad in the paper in Leisure World for volunteers and you get volunteers. And so I've, I've got some volunteers. Donald is a friend. He's also got a, a professional background in environmental issues and, and he takes great notes. And I'm looking forward to having him on my environmental board. Thank you, Don. In exchange for that, I get a spot in his band. I get to play bass in a rock and roll band, so. Anyway.
Hope Horning for City Tree Advisory Board?
Hope, Hope Horning has planted trees. I, I'm not sure what other qualifications she has, but she's also a personal friend and was a great friend throughout my campaign. And so, and she's volunteered to step up. I know that some of the things that coming down the pipe actually involve trees, maybe for the first time in the last several years. So maybe she'll have a few meetings to attend. I don't know. Thank you, Hope.
Marilyn Van Dyke for Coyote Committee and Historic Preservation Committee.
She's going to multitask for me. Actually, the historic is where she's most suited, I think. But coyote is something we need to cover. When the, when that does meet and when we do have issues with coyotes, Leisure World is very much like Ground Central over there. And you see people really get up in arms about it. Some of my neighbors walk their dogs with a seven iron in their hand just to protect their dogs from the coyotes and the stuff. So I, I added coyote to her list. That was kind of like first. But she was also a tour guide in 2015 when we had our 100-year celebration here in Seal Beach. So she's highly suitable to that. And I'd love to see her volunteer with Historic Commission here as well, in addition to all that. Thank you very much.
Margot Wheeler for Planning Commission?
Now you're talking. This is Margot Wheeler. She is a retired city planner, expert, a city planner for several cities. She's also consulted in city planning. She is, I am told, emeritus status. I've not been able to verify that, Margot, but is that the right?
Fellow.
Fellow, a fellow in, in the organizations that are city planning oriented. We have a lot of very serious challenges coming up. Margot is already helping me understand them because she understands ADUs and she understands housing element. And she's, she's been down these paths before. And she was really eager to sign up for this post. I know there's going to be a lot of work and a lot of things that need to get done in that commission. So Margot, thank you very much.
Peter Frank for Seal Beach Cable Communications Foundation?
Oh my goodness, Peter, how are you? Peter is an attorney. He has also been in the media business and cable TV business with other cities in Marin County, I believe it was correct. And while we don't have too much happening in cable TV right now, I think there might be some activity in that range. And so, Peter, with all your experience, you'll be a valuable asset to the city. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Nathan. I really appreciate your appointing me.
Yes.
I don't know how much people know about PEG, but public educational and governmental access and cable is really important. And I think we all know how important independent media is these days, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Peter. I still have a Rec and Park guy, but he is, he's not quite ready for nomination. So anyway, see, you get a bunch of volunteers.
And are there any other council comments? Call for a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelmac, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sustarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Lando, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
And move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by councilmembers. Newly elected councilmembers Lisa Lando, District Three, and Nathan Steele, District Five, were sworn into office on February 27th, 2023, and therefore did not participate in the collective bargaining process between the city and the Orange County Employees Association and will abstain from voting on item E. And we'll call for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of any item pulled.
I, I will move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item J.
I'll second.
Mayor Protam Sustarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmac, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Lando, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay. We'll move to the items removed from the consent calendar. City manager, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'll turn this item over to our Community Development Director, Alexa Smidell. Alexa?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, Mayor and Council. The item for you tonight is a professional services agreement for a program environmental impact report associated with the housing element implementation. As you'll recall, a major component of the housing element is to identify locations for future housing units that have been assigned to us. As we do not have an abundance of vacant residential land in the community, this means that a number of our housing element opportunity sites are currently zoned for commercial use. So a part of, a part of our implementation of the element is to revise our zoning to allow for housing uses on these opportunity sites. The changes in the allowable land use qualify as a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. And staff has determined that an environmental impact report, or EIR, is required to evaluate the potential impacts. The contract proposes to undertake the program EIR, which is a broader approach to an analysis versus a project EIR, where we would have a specific project that we're analyzing. This is a zoning code update, so it's, it's a much bigger program. Therefore, a program EIR is being proposed. This item can be viewed as one half of the rezoning effort. So on, on the one side, we have the actual rezoning where we're looking at creating a new zoning designation for these sites or modifying the zoning as appropriate, as required, again, to implement the housing element. This is a companion piece. This is the environmental documentation. So ultimately, both of these items will come before the Planning Commission and the council, kind of as a, as a unified piece for your evaluation. I do want to acknowledge that many of our community members are concerned with growth. And unfortunately, I'm here wearing my, my same old song hat, "We don't have a say in this. We do need to implement our housing element to meet state law." However, as with all EIRs, we absolutely want community input in this process. There are two key opportunities for the public to comment prior to this appearing before the Planning Commission Council in public hearings. The first of those is during the scoping period. The scoping period is a 30-day comment period where the public can review the initial study. We currently project that that will occur roughly in July. It's a four-week period, a 30-day period. And about halfway through that period, we will hold a scoping meeting, which is an in-person meeting where people can come, learn a little bit more about the process and the project and the evaluation, and provide comments at that point. The second major milestone, if you will, in this process is when the draft EIR becomes available. That's a 45-day public review period. And again, we absolutely want to encourage, invite, do whatever we can to receive public comments at those two critical junctures because we want this EIR to be the best evaluation possible of this project. And with that, I am available for questions, as is our Public Works Director Iris Lee. This is a little bit of a tag-team effort. And we do have Christine Abrams from Stan Tech here in the audience as well.
Questions? Councilmember Lando?
Not ready, no.
Okay. Mayor Protam Sustarsik?
I pulled this because I, I wanted the public to be aware kind of is going on. They're, they're getting familiar, I think, with the housing element, but the zoning code update also goes along with it. I, I, as I was reading through the proposal, I was, it's, it's a program EIR, which is different concept. Most people are kind of, are getting used to the, the project EIR, but a program EIR is different. And as I was reading through some of the, you know, the estimates of, you know, we're going to calculate average daily traffic and then, you know, do 12 intersect, you know, it, it's different than a project EIR where you're zeroing in on something. So some of my questions were like, well, if we approve this, but then you have a project and you say, okay, maybe we just need a negative declaration and, and have we looked at traffic that, you know, it's sort of, I'm, I'm even, I'm trying to understand it, but I, I just sort of, I appreciate your review because that's, I think, the, the biggest period, the biggest concept. But when I hear people talking about the, the scopings out there, hear a lot about traffic and I hear a lot about drinking water and water. And so those are the kind of questions I was asking is, if we, can we pump more water? My understanding- the kind of questions I was asking is, if we, can we pump more water? My understanding was water was that we have a certain agreement where our groundwater is, you know, reached at a certain level and then we have to import. So it was, it was sort of the, you know, is this really a traffic study or not? And is our water gonna change or be affected? Those were some of the questions I was trying to understand, so.
Yeah, and I'll, let me take a first swing at this and then ask Iris to step in as well. You're, you're absolutely right. You know, program EIR is different than a project EIR. This is, this is a broad base. So if and when we did have a development proposal, that project would still need to apply SEQA. The, the idea behind a program EIR is that it would streamline or simplify future SEQA analyses for these projects going forward. So it's possible that a project would, you know, do a mitigated negative declaration or, or an addendum to our EIR, you know, there, there's different methodologies that might be used depending on, depending on the project that's proposed. So this program EIR doesn't mean that everything is approved. Everything in our, you know, housing element sites are approved. That's absolutely not what's happening. Each, each, each project would still need to be evaluated to, to whatever level is necessary under SEQA. With regards to the, the traffic, Iris did work with Stan Tech very closely to craft that scope specifically to, to meet our needs so that we have a very good understanding of, of, you know, what, what this rezoning would do. Iris, do you want to provide any?
Sure. Councilmember Sustarsik, related to the traffic impact, I do want to stress that there's two components to our traffic, traffic analysis guidelines that were recently updated, actually. The one is the more traditional version of the traffic impact study based on ICU intersection capacity utilization that were, like the A through F that we're all used to seeing. And the other component is the vehicle miles travel through SB 743, which is a SEQA component of traffic analyses. So just like Director Smidell just mentioned that there are thresholds that need to be met for other project-specific developments and which is very, it's actually detailed in the guidelines when those would be needed as well. So a, a development of a significant magnitude will, may likely need another project-specific TIA.
Okay. Because I, I think when you look all over town, you're, you know, access or how traffic flows and, you know, busy intersections, we don't have that many arterials, and so, you know, what, what impacts one is, may impact all of us, so. So most things are gonna get another look. Before you would say some things, a mitigated negative declaration, you would have a look at traffic again, and, and so this is just sort of a, a broad look, and you're not gonna just turn everything into rezone, everything. That was, that was another question. It's like, okay, does everything instantly change then?
The, once the, once this EIR is completed and we've gone through the process of, of creating the new zoning and doing those different things, the, that will all be presented to the council. So the, and, and I don't, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but, but I don't want to ignore, ignore the fact that we have different designations on our housing element opportunity sites. Some of them, the, the majority of them are commercial centers, so we are looking at making them mixed use, so to allow for housing. But that's not all of them. There are a few outliers that, that aren't in that situation, so they'll take slightly different processes.
Yeah, I, I noticed you talked about 11 identified properties, but they weren't, so I, I was trying to grasp it, but I couldn't, so. Anyway, thank, thank you for that.
Question. Saw the specific scope of this particular contract is around rezoning commercial properties into residential properties? Is that the EIR, which I take to be an environmental impact?
Environmental Impact Report, yeah, that's right, to, to rezone commercial properties for mixed use. So we would allow housing to be incorporated into those sites.
Into the, the commercial sites that are already been proposed to the state as part of our housing element, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, we are still in a very fluid place to some degree because we don't have a certified housing element. So it's, it's awkward because we, we're missing that certainty at the moment, but we, we have to continue marching forward because we are past deadlines. So will we have to come back and relook at things? That's possible.
I'm just, carts and horses and things like that, and I'm a simple-minded fellow, so it's like, I'm trying to figure out, we're gonna spend money on a housing element rezoning that may not get certified anyway.
I, you know, I, I'm not the state. I, I can't tell you exactly what they're gonna do, but it's not gonna be wildly different from what we have now. We just don't have enough sites, so, yeah.
Are we optimistic we're gonna get certified?
Yes.
Oh, we are?
We will get certified.
Oh, I thought it was desperately lost.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not a small thing. It's a challenge, but we are going to get a certification.
I'm, I'm wondering if I could either abstain on this item or get more briefing and background on it before I go for that? I'm not sure what the, what we're being asked here. We're asked to approve this contract, I presume, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so.
Yes.
Do you want to chime in?
And at this point, this is just a, a contract to secure the services of the consultant that's, who's gonna prepare the EIR. It doesn't commit the city council to certify that EIR. It doesn't commit
Right.
the Environmental Control Board to make any specific recommendation or instantly with the Planning Commission.
It does commit the city council to spend $392,000, correct?
Yes. I mean, that, that's the total not to exceed amount.
Right, right.
That's where I'm uncomfortable. I'm sorry. Maybe if I'd done my homework, I...
I, I, I can tell you this, this project is being funded out of our, out of our general plan funds. That is, that is a fee that we collect as a part of our development project for general plan updates. It is, is meant specifically for these types of purposes.
Did not know.
Is this, this is required, kind of, as part of our housing element, right?
That's correct. The rezoning is, is a major implementation effort of the housing element, and because it's a project under SEQA and staff has determined that an EIR is necessary, yes, it is required.
And just to put a finer touch on that, the, the housing elements got implementation programs, and HCD hopefully will certify the housing element soon, and then is going to oversee the city's implementation of those programs to make sure it's following through on all the commitments it made as part of the housing element. And one of those is to rezone the sites that it said it was going, we were going to rezone to allow housing, that the density is outlined in the housing element. So regardless, we're, we're going to have to do this EIR to get the housing element approved, right?
No, we have to do the EIR to update the zoning, which is the implementation of the housing element. Yeah, just, just adopting and certifying the housing element isn't enough. There's a work program that lasts the entire length of it.
Okay.
Has there, excuse me, has there been a change at HCD? Are they approving cities now? Are cities getting certified in greater numbers these days that I've not heard about?
It has picked up in pace, yeah.
The tide has turned?
That, that might be a little strong. I don't know that I'd use that language, but...
Or beach community, we should be able to talk about tides, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think at this point, having worked with a number of cities on this, we've seen the comments that HCD has put out for other cities, and housing consultants and staff have figured out ways to address what HCD is looking for. So it's gotten a little easier after some cities have already been certified and we've kind of seen what they're looking for.
I would, I would love to see us get certified. I think that would be absolutely tremendous. I'm just not sure carts and horses here were in the right order, so I, I need to get comfortable with it, understand it better.
And under state law, which, this is one of the changes that, that took place during this recent housing element cycle. In previous housing element cycles, we would be, we would be given three years to update our zoning, but under new laws, we, we do not have the luxury of that time period.
When did that clock start?
That, I believe this technically should have been completed last October.
Right.
Yeah.
On the first cycle.
This is a different, a different animal at this time.
It's a very different animal, greatly.
So, it do, does the housing element and the zoning code update, do they get approved in tandem, or does, does, does the housing element have to be approved first, or?
Ideally, we would have the housing element approved and certified first, yeah. I mean, the EIR will take about a year, and like I said, we're doing everything we can to get this thing done. So I, I have every confidence we are going to have a certified housing element before we have to adopt and approve this EIR and the zoning update.
Are there any impacts in waiting to do the, get it approved and then do this?
We just continue to move past the deadlines that are set by state law, which it's, it's not my recommendation that, that we do that, that we continue to, you know, kind of push the envelope. If, if we have the opportunity to get it started, I really think we should.
And of course, the, the longer we go past the deadline, the, the possibility of a developer coming into Seal Beach using what's called the builder's remedy becomes somewhat of a reality, and that's already happening in cities like Santa Monica and Redondo Beach. And I think Huntington Beach will be, would be next. We're not quite sure where, where they're at in this process with the state, but it, it's, you know, as unhappy as we may be because we, at this point in time, have, have apparently lost a great deal of what we call local control of our own housing in our city, in our own zoning, this is, this is not a suggestion. It's not an urgent request. It's state law. And I think that the state, good, bad, or indifferent, has the, has the power to implement certain things if we don't comply, such as what's called a builder's remedy, where if your housing element is not certified, a developer can come in and build virtually any type of project they want, and the city can't stop them. In Santa Monica, there are plans for high-rise apartments in the city. So I think that it behooves us to do everything in our power to do this as quickly as possible to avoid giving an opportunity for someone to come in. And then there, of course, I understand the penalties. If, if we were to just say, you know, we've tried our best, we just can't do it, or we don't want to do it. We want to maintain our local control, then I think there's grant monies that are no longer available to us. I don't know about fines, but
That's correct.
things like that that can seriously impact other things that we are trying to do in the city.
Mayor and council, if I could, I would also just caution, all of you know this is a significant undertaking in the time and effort it takes to get this done, which is why we have to contract out with a, an experienced consultant to be able to guide us through this process. Because every other agency in the state is trying to get their housing element certified, we're limited in the number of consultants that have the staffing and the, and the ability to support cities. And so I would caution you, given that we only had one consultant that actually responded to this RFP for this service on behalf of the city. So I think that's important to consider as you're talking about, you know, potentially looking at delaying this, which, which we highly would not recommend you do that.
I have a question. So the monies used to fund these reports come from the permit fees where they're set aside and allocated specifically to, to fund these reports?
That's correct, yes. We do collect a fund for general plan updates, and that's where this money is coming from, that, that fund.
I have a question about how long, the study, how long does it take? Is it six months, three months, two months?
About a year.
About a year?
Mm-hmm.
Everything's about a year.
About a year. I'm, I'm new at this, so this is...
Yeah, no, EIRs are, are quite a process. So if, if we ran exactly on schedule, we would have a draft EIR out in about nine months for review.
And it would involve the steps like we saw just recently, the scope meeting, and it would involve all those particular steps throughout as well.
That's correct.
I'll make a suggestion that we push this to the next meeting and, and give some more time for
For me.
the new council members to absorb the information, if that is acceptable.
That's, it's prerogative of the council. Alexa, is there any, you see any drawback in us delaying for two more weeks other than two weeks that we would be using to kick off this effort?
That's correct. I mean, I, again, we, we would like to move this forward expeditiously because we're trying to meet state law, but is two weeks gonna kill it? No.
Okay. If, if, if the rest of the council agrees.
I, I would appreciate more, more background. My apologies, but I...
Okay. So yeah, we'll go ahead and push that to the next meeting.
Are you gonna take a motion to?
You want a motion to push it to the next meeting? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we push it to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Councilmember Still, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Protem Sustarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes to zero to push this to the next meeting.
Okay, there's no public hearing, no unfinished business, no new business. And tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Pat McCormick, a four-time Olympic gold medalist and Seal Beach resident, to Monday, March 27th, 2023, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Four-time Olympic gold medalist and three-time Pan American Games gold medalist Patricia Joan Keller-McCormick passed away on Tuesday, March 7th, in Orange County, California. She was 92. Patricia, Pat McCormick, born May 12th, 1930, was a retired American diver who won diving events at two consecutive Summer Olympics in 1952 and 1956. She won the James E. Sullivan Award for Best Amateur Athlete in the U.S. in 1956. She was the second woman to do so. As a child, Pat was notable for executing dives that were not allowed in competition for female divers and practicing off the Los Alamos Bridge in Long Beach. Pat attended Woodrow Wilson Classical High School, Long Beach City College, and California State University, Long Beach. After the Olympics, Pat did diving tours and was a model for Catalina swimsuits. She served on the Los Angeles 1984 Summer Olympics Organizing Committee and began a program called Pat's Champs, a foundation to help motivate children to dream big and to set practical ways to succeed. Pat is survived by her son Tim and daughter Kelly, who also went on to be a champion diver. Pat was beloved and will be missed by hundreds of friends in her hometown of Seal Beach. On behalf of the City of Seal Beach, we extend our deepest condolences to Pat's family and friends. Are there any council members that would like to comment? Okay, and we'll go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting in memory of Pat McCormick, four-time Olympic gold medalist and Seal Beach resident, to Monday, March 27th, 2023, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.